I'd like to call this the January 2nd, 2019, board meeting to order. As many of you know, I'm Matt Walker and the singular honor I get as county administrator this time of year is presiding over the board meeting until such time as we can elect a chairman, which I often try to do right off the bat so I don't hold this for very long. I'd like to wish everybody a happy new year, and with that, I will call for nominations for chairman.
Are we going to start with prayer first?
Oh, yes. Prayer. Would you like to lead us in prayer?
Yes. Let us bow our heads in prayer. Dear Father, just like to thank you for just waking us up this morning, dear Lord. And dear Lord, let's pray for the president and congress and hope that they can get the country in straight and vote for what's right for the country instead of what's right for the parties, dear Lord. And let us make wise and just decisions as we conduct county business today. Amen.
And Chip, would you like to lead us in prayer?
(inaudible) I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the law from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all very much, and that confirms the fact that I want rid of this as soon as possible. Now may I have a nomination for chairman.
I'd like to nominate Chip Holt for chairman.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Nomination made and seconded. Are there any other nominations for chairman?
I'd like to nominate that the nomination be closed.
Okay. No other discussion? All those in favor of Chip Holt being chairman this year, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, like sign. Okay. Mr. Chairman, congratulations. I will turn the rest over to you.
Thank you, Matthew. Congratulations. No, I forgot to pray. I wasn't going to let you get much for all of you.
Wayne had me.
Yeah, I had him. Make sure it's correct.
Alrighty then, the next order of business is the election of a vice chairman. Nominations are now open for vice chair.
I'll nominate Pete Mansfield.
How, nomination, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Duly moved, duly seconded, any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, no. So ordered. I believe in your packet, we've gotten a list of times and dates for meetings, which does not deviate from our normal schedule. Is everybody fine with keeping it on the first Tuesday at 3:00?
With the exception of November.
With the exception of election times, we'll move it back one day.
I'll make that motion.
Okay.
Second?
All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, same sign. So ordered. Moving on to the approval of the consent agenda. Let's see, Matt, do we have one addition?
We have one additional item for the, additional item for the agenda, Mr. Chairman. We have with us today Bruce D. Simone. He is the president of the Middlesex Foundation. He would like to give us an update under agency and staff reports on their project schedule for the workforce housing project, sir.
And where do you want to put him first?
Agency and staff reports, please.
Where in there, first?
Last.
Last, okay. Sorry about that, please. Alright, with that, one change, do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So, seconded?
Moved and seconded, all in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, same sign. So ordered. At this point, we'll open the meeting to public comment. If you have any citizens that would like to address the board, please be mindful of our three minutes per individual time limit.
You've got me back again. My name's Hal Muller. I live at 1939 Remlich Drive in Kilmers Point, Middlesex County. I'd like to wish all of you happy new year, many more to come. From the public question or information port of part of this meeting, it's always at the front before any of the documentation or anything that's in your packet is addressed. My wife and I went through the packet the other night, and we had a couple of questions for the agencies that either you can either tuck it in to ask later on to that specific agency, or do with it as you please, but we'd like to get a little bit of information. On page 223 of your packet, put out by Social Services, there are two items. Number one, it talks about unintended pregnancies that have been prevented, and they talk about the number of unplanned births that have been prevented. We don't know what that means, my wife and I. We don't, we need a definition of that. I think the first one is probably the morning after pill, and the second one is probably abortions. And I'm certain that the abortions, if there are there, and there were a total of six that were mentioned in the packet, follow the Hyde Amendment, which requires that it has to be from incest, rape, danger to the woman, or what have you. If it were for rape or incest, we'd like to know if that had been forwarded to the sheriff, and if it had been forwarded to the sheriff, what was the outcome? Were there convictions in the rape cases or in the incest cases? How do we know? The other piece of that was, they're saying that they have $113,000 savings from these two items. How do you get that? $7,000, expensive, and $113,000, it's like a treasure that I had once, and his treasure statement was, "We took some money in, we spent some of them, we had some left." Is there any more detail that we can get with this? So those are the questions, and congratulations on an excellent purchase on 107 Bowden Street. Very happy to see that in the packet. We'd like to understand what you're going to do with it. So thank you very much, ladies and gentlemen. Again, have a great new year.
Thank you, Hal. Would staff be able to meet with Rebecca and address those questions?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Next citizen, please. Anyone else to address the board? If not, we'll declare the public comment period closed and move on to item number four, which is the recognition of Mr. Chris Jones for his service to the airport committee, and I've asked Mr. Jamie Barnhart, who is chairman of our committee, to please read that recommendation. And we might even have a little photo op after that. Chris, come forward.
I'm not as old as you are. My name is Jamie Barnhart. I'm the chairman of the airport committee. We're moved that you're pleased to help the board supervisors with decisions pertaining to aviation in Middlesex County. We've had a board, we've had a committee probably for 40 years, and interestingly enough, this plaque is just monumental in what it says. For a guy to dedicate 26 years of his input to the airport is larger than I could ever imagine. I'll just go ahead and read it because I'm humbled to be the one to present it. It's got the Middlesex County little crest up there, and it says, "The Middlesex County Board of Supervisors," all these guys right here, "present this certificate to William Chris Jones," this guy right here, "and wishes to express his sincere thanks and gratitude for 26 years of oral and dedicated service to Middlesex County Airport. July the 1st, 1992," where were you back then? "December the 31st, 2018, presented the 2nd day of January." I gotta tell you something about this guy. He's like a birdman. He's got this huge tower, it looks like one of those telecommunications towers down at the airport, and it's got a light on it, and it's a, you're getting home light, it's a color beacon, and for call it GPS, a lot of times, the only way you know where you were and where you were going is by that little light swinging around. This is the guy that was a captain, that would climb up there, grease it, lubricate it, do everything else. I don't know if they couldn't find anybody else to do it, but he has been the go-to rock for 26 years for the airport. And, you know, with all that you've gotten paid for, I really appreciate looking at you.
He was good service.
Congratulations.
(applause)
I had the privilege to serve him for three of his years.
Thank you, Matt. Appreciate it.
Is there any way you can see that he had something?
Thank you, guys.
See, we have one late arrival. Mr. Cryer, you're here to be with Bruce. Did you have any business that you wanted to? Okay, great. Thank you. Welcome. Alright, moving along, we have a treasurer's report only. Pages 37 through 39 is in your packet. Moving down to agency and staff reports, do we have Ms. McGowan here with VDOT? I have not seen her. Do we have anybody from VDOT? Alrighty then, school matters. I know Dr. Gretz was off. Did we have anybody bringing us anything for that, Matthew? Social services is report only, pages 40 through 42. And then we'll move on to emergency services, the adopted of amended emergency operation plan and resolution. Mr. David Lehman. David?
Yep. (inaudible)
We, we're at a point that every four years, we have to kind of renew our emergency operation plan, and today, I've just got a short, brief presentation to tell you what we've done over the past few months, and what changes that we've made to the document itself. So on your screens, we'll go through this. It's not driving. Matt, you're going to have to drive.
No, I just did.
Go back. We got it. So basically, we are, by state code, we are required to have an emergency operation plan. Local government, as well as state governments, are required to do that. This is a plan that is to be inclusive of the entire jurisdiction and its citizens, and what we have done with this plan is made sure that it modeled after the national incident management system. And basically, back, if you go back in the records in 2005, NIMS, I'll call it NIMS from this point forward, NIMS was adopted by this board back in 2005. Next slide, please. I think you're going backwards. So basically, this plan is a multi-purpose plan. It's an all-hazard document that establishes a single comprehensive framework for us to utilize during major emergencies within the county, and we have ensured that this document is also NIMS compliant, as I repeat, repeated earlier. Next slide, please. So this plan basically outlines the roles and responsibilities assigned to the different county departments and stakeholders, and also others that assist us in the preparation. There are other partners other than county departments, such as our regional partners, our state partners, and our federal partners if such event took place. We've kind of done this through three different methods. We've taken a three-tier approach. We've got public county education and mitigation, we've got emergency response, and then we've got recovery, and I'll break each of those down for you just for a real quick overview. Under the public and county education and mitigation, this is kind of the preparation phase. You go ahead and click them all up if you will, please, Matt.
It's working now.
Okay. Is it?
Yeah, just give it a second to respond.
So we break this down. We have a citizens' public alert system that we utilize in the event of emergency to get information out to our citizens. We do a lot of planning with Middle Peninsula Planning District, just recently, like the hazard mitigation plan, they just received a grant for some additional emergency management regional plans that we'll be working on. We identify those high risk, and we look at ways to mitigate those, identify hazards within our areas, and try to provide as much information, public information, storm preparation information as we can.
What is the Everbridge?
The Everbridge is our citizens' alert system. That is just basically the brand that we utilize. So that is the, that is the paging software that we use. So when we look at our emergency response, when we have a major emergency, we declare emergency. The director of emergency management will declare an emergency in his absence, county administrator, and then we work through that incident. The emergency operation plan gives us a foundation, it gives us guidelines. It's a broad set of guidelines. Dealing with a specific emergency, then the responding departments would utilize their standard operating procedures and so forth, as we, as we work through to mitigate the situation. In this package, what we've done is we've broken it down into emergency support functions, which is called EFS, and we'll get to those here in just a little bit, on as far as our EFS, and how we had this actually developed. And then when we look at our recovery efforts after the situation's been mitigated, we've got to return to normal, how do we get through that? So this plan helps us work through that process, working with Virginia Department of Emergency Management, working with FEMA, and working through that process. It helps guide us through those, those difficult operations. So this plan, we've got a couple of different components to this plan. You've got the basic plan, that's our operational framework that gives you the overarching guidance. We've got emergency support functions. These identify primary and secondary agencies that are responsible for those particular roles and responsibilities. Our hazard and incident-specific annexes, example of that would be our radiological emergency response plan, and then we've got some supporting annexes as well. An example of that would be like our American Red Cross Shelter Agreement that we have. One thing that we've done this time, and I'm going to run through these, get them all on the board. We, in the old plan, the previous plan, or our current plan, I should say, the emergency service functions were all over the place, number-wise. This plan, we have modified the emergency support functions. We have renumbered them to the, to the federal framework, so everything is in alignment with the, with the FEMA-recommended emergency services support functions. So these are some of them that, these are the ones that we've got in our plan right now. Some of them have been renumbered and reclassified, or renamed even. We've got a total of 16. Number 16 was intentionally left out. That was military, and we don't have any military assets here within the, within the county, so that was intentionally left out. But right now, we have a total of 17 emergency support functions that the, that the plan And our specific, hazard-specific annexes, we have animal care and control, we've got budget and finance, damage assessment, evacuation, federal disaster assistance, hazard mitigation, legal assistance, zoning, planning, and inspections, our radiological protection, and our special facilities. And some of these are still work in progress. These, we work with this plan year-round. If it's a change made in contact information and so forth, we make those changes and record it in the records, record sheet in the very front of our document. So this is a working document as new information comes out and is updated. So, the big, the big takeaway from this is, we did a comprehensive revision, removed the duplicated information, we've realigned the EFS to match up with the federal framework. We incorporated a lot of the appendices that we had into the specific function, tried to clean that all up. We've updated the contact information, and we've ensured that it remains a multidisciplined plan. Mr. Chairman, that's all I have, if you all have any questions. But what I would ask is, the county attorney has drafted a resolution of acceptance to the November 18th, new updated plan. She's reviewed it, and she has drafted that for your consideration today.
Thank you, sir. Anybody have any questions, Mr. Lehman?
Going back to radiological prevention, what, what are we doing in that area?
As far as what we're doing specifically?
Yeah.
From a, from a specific standpoint, we can give it information as far as any public information that VDM puts out, Virginia Department of Emergency Management puts out. Any type of radiological accident that we have, we're going to have to call in resources from the Virginia Department of Emergency Management through their hazmat team, their hazmat specialists, they're going to have to bring the rad equipment, monitoring equipment and so forth. From a local standpoint, our first responders are trained in hazardous materials, and one of the modules of that is radiological, so they would basically want to try to determine the situation, isolate, and keep everybody back until the proper equipment and protective clothing can get here.
Do we have any equipment to, to know that this is a threat at any time?
Not that I know of, as far as any gamma ray meters or anything like that, not that I know of, no, sir.
Any other questions? Hearing none, there's a resolution for the adoption of the emergency operations plan dated November 2018, on page 205 of your packet, and the chair will entertain a motion for adoption.
I'll make that motion, that we adopted, mercy.
I second.
Motion duly made and seconded, is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, same sign. So ordered. David, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Alright, item E is the extension service. We have an annual update. Welcome.
Hi, good afternoon. Alright, so my name's Glenn Sturm. I am the Family Consumer Science Extension Agent, that covers this region. I'm also the unit coordinator here in Middlesex. I'm just going to give a quick update of what we've been up to in 2018 over the next two to three hours. That's a trick I do in teaching, because if people's heads don't pop up, they might not be paying attention. Anyways...
I'm afraid to be in a big room by your cell phone.
Alright, so some review of some of the programs we've done. As you probably know, extension's three main core educational areas are 4H youth development, family consumer sciences, and agriculture and natural resources. We've been a little limited in what we can do with that 4H and A&R piece, just because we don't have an agent in the county at the moment, but we've been able to keep a couple core programs going in each area, so just gave a quick review. Cloverwood Camp, which is ages five to nine, it's a day camp. We did one in the summer for 27 kids, one just recently, ended December, for another additional 11 kids. 4H summer camp, we have 39 campers go to that Jamestown 4H Center this year, as well as five teens. Another neat program is 4H Food Challenge Camp, and that's actually a camp where the kids will not only learn how to do food and have a little competition, they learn the nutritional side, and they're actually, a big part of that is doing a presentation so they can talk about, you know, not only is this cool dish you created, but why is it healthy? What are the food groups? What's the macro and micronutrient composition? So there's very heavy educational piece with that. In terms of agricultural natural resources, some things we did in 2018, so the Lower Middle Peninsula Ag Conference, almost every year in January. In 2018, we had 65 participants. The 2019, one will be actually just next week, on the 9th. Tomato contest, which was in July, had four youth and eight adults participate in that. Lower Middle Penins, sorry, grain production meeting in March as well, and a pesticide recertification in November. Just kind of review for that. Spent a couple minutes also talking about my program area, which is family consumer sciences, which is primarily things in financial management, consumer education, as well as health and nutrition, and some things I've been up to over the last 12 months. So the biggest piece with that financial management and consumer education has been our budgeting and personal finance workshop. It's about a two-hour workshop, and the idea is to have this broad education where helps clients figure out, you know, how do you manage your money? How do you create structured financial goals? How do you set up a budget? What are the pros and cons of credit cards? What are the five factors that go into your FICO credit score? Some of those other kind of core educational areas, and probably our biggest partners with that is Department of Social Services Rapid Rehousing Clients, as well as from Cryer Center, the Hands Across Middlesex. And both those organizations and programs do require all their clients go through that program. But we also do more intensive one-on-one financial mentoring, so that's kind of taking some of those pieces from that previous program, going a step further, and looking at, not only how do you do these things, but let's actually sit and meet every month and see how is your financial goal progressing? Are you sticking to those spending plans? Have you been able to reduce some of your debt and stay with that debt repayment plan? Again, that could be anybody from the communities, welcome for that program, but probably our biggest partnership with that is Habitat for Humanity. Their clients all go through that more intensive financial education. We are also, the, in the entire Middle Peninsula, we're only, the only Department of Justice certified in-person provider for that required debtors' education program, the one after you file for bankruptcy. We're also, I believe, the only one in the region that does provide that for Chapter Seven clients completely for free. Reality Store, which you may or may not know about, that's a youth simulation program, it's a pretty cool one. They'll get a job, income, a family situation, and then they actually go through, and we have volunteers, and many of those volunteers are coming from the Rotary, actually, which their contribution's been awesome for that. And they'll go through these different booths that represent these different expenses, and try and basically make it a month as an adult, being able to afford all those necessary expenses. One big one we did this year is more identity theft prevention classes, and a big reason for that is everything that happened with Equifax. A lot of consumers were interested in those types of classes. As far as health and nutrition, some things we've done, MyPlate Education for Youth, so learning the five food groups, and often what we'll do with that is have them hands-on, learn how to make a healthy snack, so we like yogurt parfaits and carrot rolls and some things like that. One of the programs we started just a couple months ago, and we'll do it for another round coming up actually next month, and I'm really excited about, something called Food Pharmacy. So this is actually at the Northern Neck Middle Pen, or Northern Neck Middlesex Free Clinic, but most of the clients we've been working with, they're actually Middlesex residents. And basically, what it is, is they identify, they're, some of their clients that are type two diabetics. The, we'll partner with the Healthy Harvest Food Bank, who provides most of the food there, and then I'll come in every week and actually do hands-on nutritional education to start with, then actually an hour, hour and a half of making a diabetic-friendly meal. And one big thing we've done is, is track their A1C and their blood pressure levels, and for the last round of eight clients, they all saw improvements in those measurables, which was, which was a really good thing to see from that. Also, the FitX, we do have an online web-based health competition. The idea is you have teams that walk together, they report it every week, you can see competition across the entire state that's participating in this. It's nice, too, because it's either free or $5, depending on, on what state funding we have for that, and then it comes with weekly educational newsletters to kind of help them with their goals, and a lot of times, that ties into New Year's resolutions. And that should be coming in the next couple months. The last couple things I did want to mention is Wellwater Clinics. We're the organization that, if you've seen those before, we're the organization that does provide those. does provide those. That's education on not only how to manage your wells, but also testing on 14 different contaminants. And because we do that in-house with the Biosystems Engineering Lab at Virginia Tech, we will do that for only $55. And people who are familiar with that, if you were to do 14 contaminants privately, you're probably talking anywhere from $300 to $500 for that. And additionally, thanks to River County's Community Foundation, even for those really low-income households we've been trying to target, that can't even afford that $55, we've covered that cost before. And just last year, we had about 20 to 25 households from Middlesex, and for very low-income households, we went ahead and covered their costs, thanks to those scholarships. And the last thing, and kind of just a little odd, fun thing, though, that we try and do, is actually some canning. And we actually did salsa canning for a 4H group here that did that as a fundraiser, so that was a neat little program. So hopefully you saw those guys out there. That was a cool little thing to do with them. And that is my update for 2018. If anybody has any questions for that, before I turn it over to the district director.
I just have one question. It sounds like you have a lot of partnerships going. Do you coordinate with the Free Rivers Health District on any of these programs? We're going to have a report from them coming up.
We have in the past. I'm trying to think. I cover multiple counties, and sometimes I get things mixed up. I'm trying to remember if here in Middlesex, if we've done anything in the last 12 months, and I'm not sure we have. But we have definitely partnered with them in the past.
Okay.
All righty. Any other questions? Thank you very much. That was the quickest two to three hours that I've ever...
I appreciate it. Thank you.
Good afternoon. I'm Janet Spencer. I'm the Southeast District Director with Virginia Cooperative Extension. You might remember me from last year. I came and provided a report. Unfortunately, we're kind of in the same situation that we were in last year when I gave the update. As you might be aware, the history with the Middle Peninsula is that we've had three agricultural and natural resources agents historically support the six counties in this area. Last year, when I came and made the report, we had an agent in King and Queen and King William. That's a split position. It covers both of those counties. And then we were trying to figure out where to put the second agriculture and natural resources position, because as you know, we lost David Moore from Middlesex here with his retirement, and Keith Balderson from Essex County with his retirement. I believe it's been about two years ago now. So unfortunately, due to state funding cuts, we were not able to come back in with two full-time positions at that time. And so we did move forward after our meeting last year with the Essex County A&R position. So we have Robert Longus that is there now in Essex County supporting that position. Unfortunately, Robbie is supporting the entire Middle Peninsula now, because we've had a resignation in King and Queen, King William County. So we are now, again, unfortunately, looking where to put that second agriculture and natural resources position. Previously, before last year when I was here, we were toying with the idea of a part-time position in Middlesex County. And I've spoken with Mr. Walker about this at a Planning District Committee meeting earlier in December of 2018, as well as with several of the other county administrators that were present at that meeting. And I think what we are hoping to do, you know, of course, county approval-dependent, is to move forward with a full-time Middlesex agriculture and natural resources position that would be housed here in the Middlesex County office and would help support the six counties, in addition to Robert Longus there in Essex. We are still committed to getting that third position back, but again, that's dependent on state funds, and as soon as those are available, we will be looking at the needs there, again, in the Middle Peninsula, and looking at putting in a third, a third extension agent position there. We are still, again, unfortunately, because of state budgets, trying to look at all of our options with the 4H program. Mary Rachel Miller, who was the administrative assistant in the Middlesex Office, she's been the one that's responsible for really helping carry forth that 4H program here in Middlesex. And we've also had some great support from the 4H agent in Matthews County as well, too. And so, like I said, Mr. Walker and I have discussed a few things, and I need to discuss a few things with Matthews County, but we're hoping to have some updates and options available soon for the 4H program. So that's really about all I have. It's unfortunately about the same report as last year, with just a couple of different localities thrown in there for the positions. But if you have any questions about those positions or some of the other funding situations with extension, I'd be happy to answer any of those questions you might have.
Any questions? Very nice to have you back again this year.
Thank you.
And hope to see you next year.
Thank you. All right. Y'all enjoy your afternoon. Thank you.
All right. Item F is Virginia Department of Health, Dr. Richard Williams.
Who is not here yet. Okay. Somebody remind me when we do see him come in, in case I miss him. At this point, I'd like to reintroduce Mike Sobriek, who was our part-time county attorney for some 27 years, Mike. And he retired two years ago, I guess, and Heather Lewis has been our full-time county attorney, who is out on maternity leave, and we're looking to hear the news of the landing of the stork at any moment now. But at this point, we'll turn it over to Mike to help us work through the acceptance of a deed of purchase and ratifying said motion. Mike?
And as you recall, two months ago, the county contracted to purchase the property that's currently housing the Middle Peninsula Planning District Commission. And the property did, in fact, close on December 21st, and the copy of the deed is in the file. The original deed will be sent to the county administrator's office. But today, we need a resolution ratifying the actions of Mr. Holt and accepting the deed on behalf of the county. The county was... The deed was approved as deformed by Heather Lewis, your county attorney. So I'm just asking for a resolution today ratifying Mr. Holt's acceptance of the deed on behalf of the county. So I need a motion to that.
I would like to...
Have a motion?
I'll second it.
Duly seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, same sign. So ordered. And thank you, because I'd hate to be standing out on that limb all by myself. All right. At this point, I'd like to welcome Bruce De Simone to our meeting, and I think he's got an update for us on our workforce housing project. Bruce?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Happy New Year to you and the rest of the board members. What we're... It's on... There you go. Put together a project schedule and try to get us from where we are now through when we would open up for business. And Matt and I thought it would be a great time to share where we are. Our architect and engineer have finally agreed on soil boring locations, and before the holidays, Bay Design Group contracted with a geotechnical company to do the borings, and we're expecting the results of that back fairly soon. I just got a letter that... A copy of the letter that Matt received. We still hadn't met with the Department of Housing and Community Development to see what kinds of ins and outs they were expecting on the grant, and any particular terms or conditions. However, we did go forward and bring an attorney on board that is experienced with both VHDA as well as DHCD loan closings. We can have that input, not only as we talk about the lease, but also if there's a possibility of a development agreement, just to be sure that whatever we're doing will end up in compliance with, you know, both of those agencies as far as loans are concerned. She would also be closing a construction loan for us. This month, I think our January 10th meeting, our architect's coming into town and to share and engage our board in looking at materials and finishes, so that he can really start cranking on preparing some detailed plans and specifications. And in conversations with Bay Design, they agreed to prepare a special exception application under the zoning ordinance. You'll remember, you had approved the zoning amendment, bringing workforce housing in as under the zoning ordinance and as a special exception. And so what you'll be seeing after the Planning Commission has a chance to review it, is to actually apply for that special exception for workforce housing. And hopefully, it won't be a surprise, I'm perhaps a little premature in putting Board of Supervisory Approval on there on March 5th. However, you can see, this schedule's pretty tight, and so we're really trying to get everything in. Originally, we were also talked about, excuse me, coming in with both a special exception and a major site plan application at the same time, just so there will be more information before both the Planning Commission as well as the board. However, Mr. Kretz had suggested that the Planning Commission may want to see what the outcome of your deliberations were before they acted on the major site plan. And so that's the next sequence, coming in with a major site plan application to the county for the Planning Commission's review. While all of that's going on, though, our architect and engineers are working on the plans and specs, and it's our understanding that plans and specs need to be about 85% complete before they can be submitted to VHDA for a permanent loan application. So we've got plans and specs at that point before March 11th, because we're also getting looking at putting in a construction loan application as well. We've got a preliminary letter of interest from Virginia Community Capital, which is a B Corporation. It actually was created about 15 years ago by the state. They've been doing a lot of joint financing on affordable housing types of projects and other kinds of projects, and so they're a possible construction loan lender. But I think we also plan on getting some bids from, local bids as well, on construction financing. But, you know, we're looking at mid-March to get that going. April 30th, we should have those final plans and specs ready for a general contractor to take a look at as part of a sealed bidding process. And it was recommended to us by our architect that the foundation pulled a permit, so that what the general contractor is looking at are plans and specs that are approved for a building permit. So again, in order to move along with that schedule. May 23rd, we're looking at opening up bids and selecting a general contractor. Hopefully, the bids will come in without any serious value engineering that might need to be done because of cost overages. But then, in early June, finalizing a construction contract, starting construction about mid-June. And then I'm estimating a construction for a project of this size is about nine months. And so we really wanted to get a construction start, and I would expect to have a pretty hefty penalty in there if they don't complete construction in May-June of 2020, because we're really, the primary, or a significant proportion of what we would have hoped to be residents would be teachers looking to come to Middlesex County. And the whole resident etra for this thing was to make workforce housing available for the school district to use as an attraction and a tool and a retention. However, you'll see, we're January, February of 2020, even though it's under construction, typically 90 to 120 days before the end of completion, marketing begins. So we'll have had a... Brought on a project management or property management company to... On there, and then begin marketing, and I think begin marketing to existing employees, not only at the schools, but in the county and some of those quasi-governmental organizations that are serving Middlesex in accordance with that work force housing, so that folks who may have leases expiring and may be interested in moving into Middlesex County if they're living outside or changing their housing situation can get on the list and begin that process. Hopefully, construction will be complete, or at least we'll be at a punch list element at March, April of 2020. Get a certificate of occupancy, have a final loan closing May-June, and then be ready to lease up June, July. It is optimistic, but I think it's doable. And we put this together before the holidays and collaborate, you know, the development team collaborating, and I think we have a roadmap that'll get us to where we want to be. Any questions?
Bruce, I'd just like to... For all your work on this, and for anybody that's in the audience that has not been over to Mercer Place across the river, it's well worth your while to see what a nice pattern we have for providing workforce housing for our lower-paid employees. And it's indeed an exciting time, and the whole Cook's Corner Complex is just, you're kind of the centerpiece, I think. One of them, anyway.
And Mr. Chairman, if I may, before Bruce leaves the podium, I was going to handle this under the manager's report, but I figure this is better, is good a time, maybe a better time. We've had a request from the foundation, and I think the cultural committee that's working on the historical aspects of the property, you know, they've been kind of struggling with a name for this workforce housing project. And I think the consensus that has developed is around the family that was essentially, principally involved with the acquisition and...
The Rawley family.
Of the property on which the park and the housing would be located, the Rawley family. I think it's the committee's recommendation and the foundation's request to the board that the board allow that housing facility to be named after that family, and potentially the nature park area in honor of the family and them being such critical factors in the acquisition of that property for the African-American community.
Matt, I think we had discussed this a little bit, but some people do, and some people don't want recognition for the good things that they've done. Have we been able to contact any family members?
It's my... Yes, sir. It's my understanding, Mr. Henry Easton has kind of followed up on that, and there's no concern in the community or with the family, it's my understanding. I think he's going to reach out to a couple of family members that he's aware of in New Jersey, but he does not anticipate any opposition to that whatsoever.
Yeah, Mr. Easton confirmed that in a telephone conversation this morning that I had.
One.
It would be our version of Mercer Place.
Right.
Mercer Place.
No, I think it's great. I just want to make sure, because sometimes unintended consequences, you honor somebody and they didn't want to be honored. Do we need to move on that, or is that just something?
I think the foundation would have a little control over the housing. If it's the board by consensus will, I think we can name the nature park after it similarly. I don't know if you need a vote on it, but if you'd like to, I mean, that's fine, too.
Do we have such a consensus? Very good.
Thank you very much.
Bruce, thank you.
Thanks, Bruce.
All right. I think that completes agency and staff, unless, does Dr. Williams come in? Still not? Okay.
I don't think we've heard from him today, either.
All righty. Moving on to item seven, regular agenda items. Betty Muncie.
And Mr. Chairman, if I may, before we move away from the Health Department, I believe Mr. Muller's question was geared towards the Health Department, not our Social Services Department. We will forward those questions to Dr. Williams in the Health Department, so they can be prepared to answer them next month.
Great.
When they get this same presentation.
Thank you, sir. Betty, can you help us with the budget transfer request?
Certainly try. You have these in your packet. It's all monies that have already been budgeted, or new monies that have come in that need to go out to different expense lines. The first is a budget transfer request. We are in sore need of a secondary animal control vehicle, and we are down to one. And Ricky Warren has contacted several animal control offices around the state. He put out feelers to see if they had any surplus vehicles that they wanted to part with, and found this one in Chesterfield County that we have gone and taken a look at. This has a... It's called a SWAB. I'm not sure what that stands for, S-W-A-B, but it's got a body on it that has the compartments and that gets air to it and everything for animals' transport. So if for nothing else, we're looking at being able to utilize that body on another truck, should we need to. So this request is to transfer money out of our contingency line into animal control so that we can purchase that.
Very good.
Can we keep going?
Well, one's a budget transfer, and the other's a supplement request. We can act on both of them if you...
I can do it.
Act on both of them at the same time? Okay.
Okay. Passport fees have been collected by the Treasurer's Office, and in the past, boards have spent an agreement with the Treasurer's Office that 80% of the fees that they collect get appropriated back in so that... To pay the employees for doing that, performing that additional duty. So that's what that is. The next is actually coming from the fund balance. The board approved in July to use some of the end-of-year funds to purchase software... and workstations for the computer aided dispatch system that has now been installed and it's come online since the end of last month. You initially approved a hundred and fifty-six thousand for that, and it was found that they needed an additional server to handle that equipment. So that's why that fund request is for a hundred and sixty-eight thousand, five fifty-four, sixty-six. And the very last one is revenue that's come into the Department of Social Services, nine thousand nine oh seven twenty-two, and they have various expense line items there that they would like to appropriate that money back into. And there's an explanation, they had attached explanations for those ones.
Thank you, ma'am. Do we have a motion on the budget transfers and supplement requests?
Can I go back to the one of a hundred and six thousand?
A hundred and...
For software, or a hundred and...
The a hundred and fifty-six thousand for the software and the three workstations. That was a contract the board approved in July.
Okay, we've already...
You already approved that. We just, you already approved it at the time we did not put the money actually into the budget to buy it, but we have purchased it and it's online.
So any conversations a little bit late?
Yes. That should have happened in July. You agreed to buy it, we bought it.
Now we're just moving the money?
Now we're just moving the money around.
Okay, we've got one budget transfer and three budget supplement requests.
I'll make a motion to approve FY 2019 Trail Budget Transfer and then FY 2019 '26, '27, '28 Budget Supplement Request.
Second. Duly motioned and seconded. Are there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, same sign, so ordered. Thank you very much. All right, appointment for CPMT. Betty, is that a...
That can, that can be me.
Okay. If that can be you, that would be good.
In your packet, there is an appointment memo that Susan prepared that shows, we did receive two applications for appointment to, I still call it the CPMT, Community Policy Management Team, as a parent representative. That's part of the Children's Services Act that works through social services. It's a multi... Discipline.
Team, yeah.
Yeah, to task representatives from the Health Department, social services, schools, the court services that serve on that. And we had a parent representative who's no longer on there, and we have two applicants for that, who have expressed interest. And then we also have on there the Airport Committee at Large position that Chris Jones had been filling, and that term expires in August. At the time that we put the board packet together, we had not received any applications, but then over the weekend, we got one in from Richard Lewis, who is, he actually rents a hangar from the county down there. So he has expressed an interest in that.
The two applications in the packet, the check mark for what they want to serve on is in two different places, but they both want the same thing. Is that correct?
Should say...
One of them looks like the Recreation Committee and the other one looks like the CPMT. But they both want the same job?
As far as I know, yes.
Okay.
I think the check mark signifies that they'd be willing to serve on either.
Okay.
But currently, we have an opening on CPMT.
The lines aren't exactly lined up there.
I just want to make sure.
But the, excuse me, is there just one opening on the CPMT?
Yes, there's one opening.
Is there not an opening for another role on that committee coming up? No?
I understand, not one.
We have one, one parent representative on that group.
Right, right. I thought there was another community representative, but my mistake.
Are applicants encouraged to touch base with members of the board? Because I haven't heard, I don't know these folks personally.
I know both of them.
Okay. You getting ready to make a motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion that we accept Dave Gresham for the CPMD position.
I have a motion. Is there a second?
I can second motion, so I'll second that one.
Any discussion?
Well, yes.
Okay.
Can you elaborate, Wayne, on why Dabbling versus Karen Lewis?
Well, one thing, she's, she's been in the county for a long time. She knows a lot, a lot about, you know, different aspects of, you know, children and different things like that in social service and stuff like that. She also was the president of the NAACP, and she's been very active in the community. And I felt that she would do a good job at that position.
I just, I thought Mrs. Lewis provided a good application and a letter from Rabahana Community College. And I, you know, to be clear, I'm very appreciative of volunteers for these committees and input. I just want to acknowledge, you know, the, the value of having two...
Two good applicants.
Good applicants.
Yeah, yeah. And I feel that also there'll be some other places for current and other areas.
Okay, because that's what, I feel a little ill-prepared to make a decision, even though I sit on this committee, without, you know, having more interaction with either candidate. And I don't want to diminish the contribution of Mrs. Lewis and make sure that we take advantage of her willingness.
Yes, yes, I understand. Yeah, and I appreciate, you know, just call me sometime, you know, because I've been a longtime resident here. I know a lot of people in the area, and, you know, we can communicate on that. Because I didn't have any idea that, you know, would be any issue on this.
No, I didn't.
Oh, okay.
I think we have two good candidates.
Because I, like I say, I've been, I've been knowing them rest all of my life here, you know, I've been here. I know both of them. Both of them are very excellent candidates.
Right. That's, I guess that's the point I wanted to be made, that we have two very good candidates.
Right.
Okay.
And if I may add, we can reach out as staff and make sure that if there is a desire to serve on the Recreation Committee as well, maybe there could be an opening there, or if we have an opening, we could look at that. We definitely, as staff, want to encourage citizens to volunteer, and we need the volunteers on these committees, so we try to be as hospitable as possible.
Absolutely, and in accepting one, you don't like to reject another.
Right.
That's right. There may be another role.
I don't know how to get around that, other than to...
As we have openings for committee assignments, we try to keep on file any citizen request forms that we have, and we kind of go to them, are you interested in serving in this capacity? That's something that, that you know, try to do as...
Yeah, I would like it if staff would give applicants contact information, even though it's on the website, for the members of the board to supervise, because I'd like to hear from these people and have them ask, you know, I'd like to be appointed to this and here's why, because I unfortunately don't know either one of these folks. And I'm very appreciative of citizens stepping forward to volunteer, and I'm like you, I don't want to reject anybody, want to include everybody that wants to include.
Right. And I think Dabbling's a good, very good candidate, too. I'm not taking anything away, I just, we had two, so I think that's...
All right, we have a motion and a second. We've had discussion. Is there any further discussion? Call for the question. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, same sign, so ordered.
Mr. Chairman, before you leave that item on the agenda, I would like to add, and it's probably a good fortuitous time to add this, we do have other openings on other committees in the Urbana District on the BZA. It was just brought to my attention before the meeting that we are looking for a member to serve on the BZA. Now, the Board of Zoning Appeals is one of those unique quasi-judicial bodies that the board recommends and the judge actually appoints, and they cannot serve on any other committee with very strict limitations on other committees that they have to serve on. But we do need a delegate for the BZA in the Urbana District. So that's something we can look at as well.
Saluda District.
Saluda Urbana, yeah, sorry.
And it's in the packet.
Right. I'm glad Melissa's not here, she'd correct. The Saluda District.
Very good. All right, item number eight, our interim county attorney's been on duty here for two days.
Don't we have to vote on Richard Lewis's application?
I thought we did.
Did you want to vote on, on the airport?
Oh, you got the airport?
Yeah, that's the airport. Richard Lewis from Hardyville.
Okay.
I meant that we approved his application for the Airport Committee at Large position.
I second. Motion duly seconded for Richard Lewis on the Airport Committee. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, same sign, so ordered. Thank you, John. Get that. Anyway, Mike, you've been back on the job for a little over, little less than two days. You got any major updates for us?
You worked on the first seat, didn't you?
No, I don't have any updates. The county attorney left me some things she asked me to work on, so I've got my working papers.
Well, again, glad to have you back. Thank you for stepping in. As I said, it was a whole lot nicer to have, have somebody that, with experience with our county than to, than to break in a rookie for a couple of months. So this has been, it's very nice to have you back.
Thank you.
All righty, number nine, Matthew.
First, I guess the first thing I'd like to report on the, to the board is that we have asked the former part-time county attorney to bring his nameplate back, so he would have a nameplate here at the podium. Welcome Mike back to the team. Glad he's back with us for a while. Just a couple of quick items, updates for the board. Had some discussions with a couple of members of the board over holidays. You are aware that we have a budget work session scheduled for Friday. That budget work session's largely more of a strategic meeting for the board to get updated on the housing project, on the water and the sewer projects, and on the Cook's Corner project as a whole. And also, and to staff, the most important thing in that meeting is to hear from the board any strategic desires, designs, goals the board has in mind for this budget. That way, the staff can embark upon trying to meet as many of those goals with financial resources we have available as we can right up front. We have had this discussion, I think, in previous years. It's kind of been customary to have this opening session, but it's always kind of at an inconvenient time for the board and for staff. It got adopted as our, as part of our budget calendar in November, but I want to put it to the board, is there a general desire to reschedule that meeting from Friday further into the month? We will make note of it if there is, and we'll try to either schedule that meeting before the Christmas holidays or later in January next budget year. We can't go back and have it before the holiday this year, but we can flag it for next year. Otherwise, we're planning to have it at nine-thirty on Friday.
Sir, it would please me to reschedule it. I've got a lot of conflict on Friday, and I can, I can certainly make that, but if we could reschedule.
I think it snuck up on everybody again, and it did last year, too, so.
It's important, it's important, and we need to get it under our belts, but if we could, if we could reschedule that a little bit later in the month, I think that would be... John?
That's fine.
Kathy?
Well, are we talking also about the updates on these?
On the projects.
The projects would be at the same meeting, is the thing. So, no, I'm fine, it'll still be in January.
I would, depending on the pleasure of the board, I would suggest maybe the 11th.
That's next week.
Next week.
What time?
Same time, nine-thirty. I don't think that conflicts with anything else we have in the budget calendar.
11th, nine-thirty.
And you'll send calendar in, Mike?
Absolutely.
Yep, it works.
Okay.
Very good.
Nine-thirty.
Thank you, everyone.
That was, we reserved nine-thirty to one for that, the same time?
I think that's plenty of time, and a lot of that will, you know, depend on how much board discussion there is. What I would ask the board to do over the next couple of weeks is consider what strategic goals you have for the budget, so you can give staff the guidance and advice.
Okay.
And we'll be giving you updates on the major projects that are currently underway, and I'd like to hear from you. Okay? Next item, update on the bike path project that we have underway in Deltaville. As many of you are aware from our previous report, Mark Longest is working on that with the Middle Peninsula Planning District Commission, trying to resurrect an old grant application that we had almost fifteen years ago to provide multipurpose paths and make Deltaville a little bit more pedestrian-friendly community. Mike has met with Mr. Becker, the Middle Peninsula Planning District Commission's transportation planner. They have, as the board's aware from our previous report, found numerous potential grant possibilities to pursue that. The next step they want to employ is basically go back and see if there were any easements acquired last time along with some of the preliminary proposed routes. I'm not aware of any. I took over the project as planning director towards the tail end of it, and I don't think the county received any easements, but I appalled them in their interest of trying to do some due diligence to see what easements we were able to acquire last time. I'm not aware of any of Mike's, he was involved in some of that, and I don't think we were very successful last time in getting easements. But that project's still moving forward. The Planning District Commission is working with Mark Longest on that. In the, the last, I have nothing further to report on the sewer or the water project, nothing, you know, with the holidays and everything. I'll have a more detailed report for you on January the 11th on both of those, but yes, sir.
On the trail, I noticed when reviewing the Middlesex County and School Board RFQ response that Group Consulting has substantial experience winning grants for trails. So I, as the broadband chair, I also was looking at their broadband grant writing experience and just wanted to flag that for you if it didn't pop up for the same reason when you were reading it.
It kind of has for a little different reason, but duly noted, and that's a good segue into the last item I was going to brief the board on. As the board's aware, the Budget and Finance Committee that we have formed with the School Board wanted to move forward with an RFQ for professional engineering services, not only for the Cook's Corner project and grant, project, but also with review and study of renovation of the east wing of the high school, or renovation of the high school in general, I should say. With that, they're going to look at other alternatives and make sure that's perhaps the best plan. But we did put out an RFQ, request for qualifications for engineering services. The preliminary informational meeting we held on the schools and the county jointly on the 17th was fairly well-attended. We received interest from one candidate, we received one proposal. Two firms who actually attended the meeting decided to submit a joint proposal, the Thrasher Group and Bay Design in particular. I and the superintendent have polled the committee, I polled our members, he's polled his, and the committee, the Budget and Finance Committee is also serving as a selection and review committee for the engineering services, would like to move forward with interview and potential contract negotiations with the one proposer. That would need to come back before the board in January for final approval. The interview...
January or February?
I'm sorry?
January or February?
I'm sorry, did I say January?
Yes.
... February board meeting. The interviews would take place on January 9th at our regularly-scheduled finance and budget meeting. The one firm that submitted a proposal was Bay Design with the Thrasher Group co-submitting with them, or submitting with them under their proposal. They have a fairly strong team that both Pete and I believe, Dr. Pete and I believe, are capable of performing the work of the two essential or initial projects. And that's kind of where we are on that.
May I, excuse me, may I follow up a little bit with what John was, was saying about grants for broadband?
Mm-hmm.
You know I gave you a card, which I asked you to, to pass on to, to John?
It's my understanding they had met with him already by that time, the state.
At the VACO meeting, and I know that you were there when the governor spoke, saying we have money, which we would like to, for all practical purposes, give away. And this gentleman was on that card whose name escapes me as more and more people.
I spoke to him as well later that evening.
I talked with him after the meeting, and he assured me that he would like to get, get with some, someone in Middlesex County, and I would presume that person would be John.
John and Kevin, it's my understa, you know, he was very excited about hearing about our project. I told him a little bit about the broadband authority and the water authorities' partnership with the county, very excited about it. If the project gets a little further along, we get the easements in place, we get a design in place, I think we would be highly... in place, I think we would be highly competitive for those grants, not to mention potential USDA monies as well. We've got to get to that stage. It's my understanding John and Kevin met with him.
We did. Just as an overarching view of what we've learned in my short tenure on the broadband authority, Middlesex finds ourselves in a position where we're poor, we're just not poor enough, and how that manifests itself in terms of broadband is we're underserved, but we're served adequately from most every funding source that we've found, and we've gone out to a number of them, and I've brought on to my committee a number of industry folks and grant writers, and it's frustrating, because people say something like, "We have money and we want to deploy it," and you, with limited knowledge of Middlesex's state in terms of service on broadband, you go in thinking, "Well, surely that's us and we qualify." Well, turns out, there's a lot of people that have a lot worse service than us, which doesn't really make the media quite as readily as some governor agency saying, "We've got money we want to throw away, what are your supervisors doing to get it?" So it's more nuanced, but I'm not, I don't want anybody to stop keeping an ear out, if you hear of a grant, or make a new contact, please let me know, and I'll be sure to circle up and let you know that we followed up with them, and I will not begrudge anybody's the one that finds the money for us, doesn't have to be me.
Thank you, sir.
If there are no further questions, I think it's the will of the Budget and Finance Committee to go ahead and interview the proposal, or the proposers, and get a little bit more specifics on how they're going to come at the Cook's Corner Engineering, related to our grant, Cook's Corner, or grants, plural, Cook's Corner, and the school project with the high school.
But the bottom line is, is that we got one proposal, but that proposal partners two of the folks that we wanted proposals from.
That's correct. Well, we, in two of the, we had two, three major firms participate, and several smaller firms participate in informational session on 17th.
And there's a right fair amount of time and materials in this, anyway.
That's correct.
So it's not really a fixed price on a package deal, because of some floating...
Well, that's correct, and a lot of this is going to have to be negotiated out, because it's going to come down to time and materials, engineering time on task. The project's multifaceted, and until we get into the weeds with one firm and kind of nail that down, it's going to be a little problematic. One thing I would add is, we did hear from a couple of firms, and timing was a factor, being that the Budget and Finance Committee meets on the 9th, we had to have the RFQs due on December 28th, and of course, that puts it right in the middle of the holidays, and there was one firm that expressed, you know, "We probably would have submitted a proposal, we just didn't have staff available to put it together." And then we had contact with one architectural firm that said, "There's just not enough architecture in it for us to go out alone, we would want to team up with someone else to do a joint application." But the one proposal we got, I reviewed over New Year's, and it's pretty sound, they've got a good team here that can definitely take care of the work involved, and I think John has already pointed out a couple of things that kind of caught my eye, but from a little different tack, so.
So are we okay with the Budget and Finance Committee moving forward with interviewing the proposer, just consensus-wise?
Yep.
Yeah.
Very good.
Okay, thank you, sir, that was all I have.
All right, on to unfinished business, Mr. Mansfield, do you have any?
Yes, I'd like to take just a couple minutes of new or unfinished, or whatever. I would really like to thank Dave Cryer and Greg Chambers for the enormous amount of work that they do for our county. Much of it is not recognized, but there are a hundred other people that really deserve thanks also, but I would like to pick these two people out and use my time to say thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Nothing?
Nothing at all. Mr. Evans?
I really don't have any either, but I can say I know both of the gentlemen that Pete has just referenced, and I would say, "Here, here."
You're here. Kathy?
Yes, sir.
All right, then we'll do new business, back the same way, anything? All righty, then, we will go to Supervisors' comments and reports, so let's see, I'll start with Kathy on this one.
Okay. Go, let's find my notes. I would like to thank the staff for incredible amount of work, I know, had to be done for the, to prepare and execute that deed, and so, and I know it's a very busy time of year, and a lot of coordination, so I wanted to mention that. I also want to report just a couple of things in December, a Friends of the Library gathering that was very helpful, and I appreciate the efforts the library is making to increase outreach to all members of the community and the workshops. If you're not receiving the Middlesex Library Newsletter, encourage you to do so, I mean, there's workshops on budgeting and, and all sorts of activities that are lifestyle things and improvements. The schools have done a really nice job as well of inviting the community, and I enjoyed one of their December programs. The Middle Peninsula Planning District Commission, Wayne and I were both at that meeting, and there are a number of things related to regional planning that come up there, including a new Virginia Water Trails website, but one of the things that came up that I thought was interesting is participation with Rappahanna Community College and the dual enrollment and the rankings, they'll be recruiting a new president, and the Planning District Commission wanted to have some input there, and it was agreed to advocate for, you know, send us a great new innovative president to serve our students and our communities, and also on that to, I guess, be sensitive to increasing the enrollment or facilitating the dual enrollments, and there is some discussion about fees that might be going up there. So when Dr. Gretz is here, I'm sure he'll have information, but it's a tremendous resource that not everybody may be aware of, people in the schools and everybody, I just wanted the Board to know that the Planning District Commission is providing input there to make sure that we have top-notch programs for our students in that area of dual enrollment or other types of technical education and things like that. And I have, oh, the other mention, I'm sure Wayne will add to what I noted, but the, there was an agreement that, that the advocate, or the lobbies for the, in the state legislature could lobby, and on our behalf, for things that have already been approved as policy for the Middle Peninsula Planning District Commission or Virginia Association of Counties. The other thing, I would just like to put a special invitation to BDOT to send a representative in February. I think, I know they have a lot of challenges, and I think they have a system to try to be responsive to inquiries that I've used quite a bit, and sometimes it works well, but there are questions remaining, and if they're not going to be here, then, you know, I'll go right to them, but sometimes I think it's nice to just wait to the meeting and then address those, so I'd like to see a little bit more there.
Very good, thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
John?
Well, in my first January on this board, I didn't have much to say, so I'm going to try to keep that tradition alive for one more January.
Very good. Does that conclude your report?
That's it.
Mr. Jesse?
I would like to say, you know, last month, Louis Briggs, he came before the Board, and I'd like to say thank him for that, because a lot of times, you know, as the Board, you know, is always, a lot of times, the negative input, and it was, I'd like to thank him for, you know, thanking Dr. Gretz, and Matt, and the county, the whole Board, for about the historical marker, and I'd like to commend him for coming up here, talking about that. I did tend the Oyster Festival Foundation, everything's going fine there, we didn't go in a hole, and they're looking for some more members on that Board there. Middle Peninsula Planning Commission, Kathy covered everything, except for they got the 911, the new generation 911 mitigating, and Louis Lawrence and General Assembly, they would have talked to the General Assembly and get some of those things straight with the new 911 mitigation grant. And also, the Drag and Run Steering Committee, that six years ago, that hadn't been doing anything, it was inactive, we decided to vote to disband that, because wasn't anything going with the Drag and Run Committee, that they hadn't had any meetings or anything, so they just disbanded that, because a lot of the land has been bought up and being conservative on that. And that was it for my committee reports.
Mansfield? And I'd like to do the same thing that John did. Going last here, as an explanation of all this facial hair, my wife and I do Santa and Mrs. Claus for a couple of occasions, and we did the Delta Ville Maritime Museum, and second shift at the Department of Social Services, Christmas party for the children, and had a great time. Also had a water authority meeting, and that concludes my remarks. So we've got public comments on, it's the last issue, so I will open, if the Board members have no other... Right before I open, Larry, do you want a picture of the same group that you had last year?
Yeah.
Okay, we'll do that as soon as we adjourn. Okay, we'll open up the public comment period.
Good afternoon, to the Board of Supervisors. My name is Louis Briggs, 1034 Hayless Road, Locust Hill. Glad to see you all back, like I say, you're looking good, so I think, let's make this a good year, but I just have one thing to say, and after I say that, I'll sit down, I mean, I'm gonna, I'm gonna be a voice this year, but Mr. Chip Hart, Chairman, Mr. Chairman, you say you don't, you didn't know Davlin Gresham. Davlin Gresham had been in here at least four times on the podium right here where I'm standing, and she had addressed the Board on different items. She had been the President of the NAACP for the last four-plus years, and for you say you can't, you don't know her, and she's my president, I'm a member of the NAACP, and she is my president, if you can't remember her, then you can't remember me either. So I hope if she come in here again, that you recognize, as a matter of fact, she had talked to you a few times, and you had been to our meeting at the Cook's Corner Complex. I think just about everybody in here know Davlin Gresham. She's a member, she's the President of the NAACP. Those people that represent me in this county, like you all, you need, hey, you need to take those people into consideration, those are people that can be in my life throughout. So for say you don't recognize her, I'm gonna apologize to you, maybe you don't, I mean, hey, but everybody in here know her, so be careful.
If we could speak after the meeting?
Right, okay, we could speak after the meeting, but I just didn't like that, when you say you didn't rec, you don't recognize her, and that's bad on me, and for you being the Chairman, people like being in position, you should recognize them.
I would like to explain myself, please.
Okay, y'all have a blessed New Year, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I just have one question, if I may, are the Budget Committees going to be televised? Are you going to put them on the web? The reason I say that, I've been to a lot of them, but they changed now, it's just been changed again, and if that can be put out on the web, I'm sure it would be of great interest to many of the people in the community, and make it a lot easier on the citizenry, just for something for you all to think about, thank you.
Thank you. Any other citizens, please?
Dave Cryer, Urbana, I just wanted to bring something to your attention, Middlesex County is one of the few counties in Virginia that does not have a comprehensive program for children feeding and enrichment during the summer. I'm very happy to say that's going to end this year. We have put together a group, Social Services, the School Board, the State Department of Social Services, the Kiwanis Club, and several others, and starting this summer, we're going to have a feeding program with transportation from school buses, we've, the whole bit, every day of the week, and on Fridays, the children will continue the Backpack Buddy program in the summer. There will be a program for these children at Middlesex Elementary School, it's going to be quite interesting. We've acquired all the money, and unfortunately, I just finished the budget and didn't have anything left to ask you for, but give it time.
Continue, please.
Barbie?
Continue to do that.
So this is, you know, we've worked everything out, we're going to literally have school buses traveling the roads in the summer, picking up kids, bringing them in, having, feeding them, giving them a program, so we're on track, looking good, it's a great program. Thank you.
Thank you, Dave.
Thank you, sir, and I'll add my thanks to Mr. Mansfield, sir.
Good afternoon, my name is Dawn Moore, and I live in the Harmony Village area of Middlesex County. I would like for you all to know that I am the new President of the NAACP, so if there's any problems or issues, I would like for you to bring them to me before I have to come here. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else, please? Seeing none, we'll declare the public comment period closed, and the Chair will entertain a motion for adjournment. That's a move.
Second.
Duly seconded, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, so ordered.